Thank you, and thank you to the candidates for giving your time to tonight's forum. I would also like to thank the committee members for putting together this forum, as well as the audience who are participating on Zoom, watching the forum on Xfinity Channel Four, live streaming from the city of Manitowoc website, or on Facebook Live. The format and the rules for the forum are as follows. The forum is scheduled to run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Candidates are seated before you in the following way. They're seated in numeric order according to district, and then by alphabetical order by last name within each district. We will rotate candidates to go first in answering each question, starting with the left and moving to the right. There will also be a segment for the council candidates and a segment for the mayor, mayoral candidates. The Citizens Advisory Committee has compiled a series of their own questions for each segment, which we will kick the evening off with. Each council member will be given up to two minutes for an opening statement, and then 30 seconds to respond to each question as they are asked. The timekeeper, committee member June Kramer, is sitting at the table. Candidates, please be mindful of your time. Pay attention to June, and wrap it up when June holds up the yellow card to remind you that you have 15 seconds remaining. She will hold up the red card when your time has expired. Then we will proceed to the mayoral segment. At that time, each mayoral candidate will have up to two minutes for an opening statement, and one minute to respond to each question. We will again rotate candidates to go first to answer each question, starting with the candidate on the left and moving right. After the Citizens Advisory Committee questions have been asked, if time permits, we will open it up to the online audience. Viewers on Zoom can submit questions via the chat box. Viewers on Facebook can submit questions in the comments section. When submitting your question, please indicate whether it is for council candidates, or the mayoral candidates, or both. This section is monitored by Sonia Vasquez, one of our committee members, and she will read each question as it's written during the allotted audience question time, as time allows, until 7:50 p.m. Please know that we may not get to all questions. Any question considered to be inappropriate will not be read. At 7:50 p.m., each council candidate and mayoral candidate will be given an opportunity for a one-minute closing statement. I'll mention that no candidate has been provided questions for tonight's forum in advance. We ask candidates to be respectful of each other, and respectful of each other's turn to speak, and not to make distracting comments while other candidates are speaking. Again, I thank you all for being part of tonight's forum. Let's get started. We'll begin with a two-minute opening statements. And first, I'll be reading the statements submitted by unopposed District Two candidate Chad Beeman. Hello, friends and neighbors of Manitowoc. My name is Chad Beeman, elder elect for District Two. I was born in District Six and raised in District One, and I'm very proud of our beautiful city. I adore its citizens, business owners, architecture, scenery, and the current direction our mayor and his staff have taken us. I've been involved in the Lake Shore Artist Guild from the beginning. I've been a supporter, owner, operator, member of the City Clipper Co-op from very early on, and I support both these groups. I've worked on several local projects in regards to the arts, including but not limited to the Lincoln Park Zoo, Strand Adventures, Madison Elementary, and other large installments currently on the horizon. I support our local, I support our current growth, and would like to be part of that progress for a while going forward. I will try and take the views of those in my neighborhood, my district, and our community, and share those views and opinions during any and all decision-making processes. I've heard many good things about mayoral candidate Abel from his elementary students, but I would like to see Mayor Nichols continue on after this upcoming election. I feel he has made great strides recently, and has much more to accomplish before he leaves his current position. I ventured out into our city after high school for a while, and picked up some experience, diplomas, degrees, and valuable life lessons. I have friends in all walks of life, from almost every state, and some from outside the United States. Many of my closest friends and family are of very diverse backgrounds. They have all had a part in who I am today. I listen to our elders, as they have been around, and have valuable insight. I get a lot of input from my wife and our children. They are always a big part of my decision-making process, as they should be. Family first, and our children are our future. I support our constitution. I pledge allegiance to Old Glory. I pray to our Lord Jesus Christ, and I choose love over hate, and prefer positive attitudes. I believe we have room as a community and as a country to always improve our ways. Keep learning, continue growing, and moving forward, while also preserving the beauty of the past. I do, I don't believe everyone is born with the same opportunity, but I do believe if they choose, anyone can break free and rise above the obstacles in their path. I, I'm well aware of the good that people have bad luck, and sometimes make mistakes. I also believe in second chances. However, I also believe in accountability. I do not support those who expect handouts, those who continue down the wrong path, and time again because they know others will bail them out. I do, I don't care for those who complain about everything and everyone. I encourage a diverse forum on topics, but dislike individuals push their opinions of what's right and wrong in their minds on others. Together, we succeed and prevail. Thank you for your support of our council, our city, and myself. Please feel free to reach out with thoughts, questions, and concerns, and I will do my best to relay, answer, and address these items as applicable, whichever district you may decide reside in. Sincerely, Chad Beeman. All right. Next, I will welcome unopposed District Ten candidate Todd Reckelberg to the podium to read his statement.
My name is Todd Reckelberg, and I live at 1914 Sharon Lane. My wife, Mary Jean, and I, we moved to Manitowoc 32 years ago, when I accepted the position of comptroller auditor for Manitowoc County. Now it's referred to as finance director. In the neighborhood, I've been walking our dogs. We have two dogs, Misty and Dolly, so if you see somebody out there struggling to try to keep them on track, that's probably me. I attended UW-Green Bay, where I majored in business administration with a major, actually, emphasis in public accounting. Upon my graduation, I joined Kirk Darrell CPA Furb, and later moved over to Green Bay Packaging Incorporated corporate office. After that, I proceeded to Brown County and became their assistant finance director, where I worked eight years, and then was contacted by our auditors in Manitowoc County to interview for their job. So for the past 32 years, I've been the, basically now referred to as the finance director for Manitowoc County. I retired January 15th, and somebody said, "You must be a glutton for punishment because you're running for city council." And apparently, I must be, but... Why am I running? I'm running to keep an eye on property taxes. I've worked for more than 12 years with Bob Zieglebauer doing his budgets. I understand his philosophy. A lot of times, we saw eye to eye, and sometimes we didn't. And thank God, he remembered I grew up in Green Bay originally, because there was a couple Lombardi-type things, where the door was closed and we, we butted heads a little bit. Roads. I want roads repaired. I want to put an emphasis on that. And most importantly, even though I have my ideas, I'm there to represent my constituents. So if my constituents have a majority opinion different than mine, that's who I have to go along with. Thank you.
Now I'd like to welcome District One incumbent Brett Vanderken to the podium to read his statement.
My name is Brett Vanderken. I'm the current alderman for District One. It has been an honor being able to serve the people in District One for the past year, and I would be honored to do so again for the next two years, if given the opportunity. Since taking this office, I've always done my best to respect the interests of the district and the people. I take concerns of the citizens very seriously, and, and by always replying to concerns and asking for input regardless of, regarding specific issues regarding the city. I moved to Manitowoc a few years ago with my now-wife, and fell in love with the city and the community. A year ago, we had, we celebrated the birth of our daughter, and I want to make sure that by running for office, I can ensure that Manitowoc remains a great place to raise a family. I served overseas in the Army for four years as an intelligence analyst. Graduated from Lake Shore Technical College with a degree in IT, information technology, networking, and graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee with a degree in economics and political science. I believe in fiscal responsibility, that taxpayer money is not wasted, and that people should not be excessively taxed. I believe in economic development as the key to our city's success, and clearing hurdles for business development is the best way to create economic opportunity. I look forward to representing District One once again, if given the opportunity. Thank you.
Now I'll call upon District One candidate Teresa Schmidt to read her opening statement.
We're figuring out sound on our end. One second.
...this community, and I am not afraid to speak out, not only for myself, but for others.
Teresa, can you hear us?
I can hear you. You can't hear me?
We couldn't, but could you please start again?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sounds good. All right. When I decided to run for District One Alderman, I never thought it would be like this. I am not a politician. I never have been, never want to be, and I do not know all the ins and outs. I ran because I care about this community, and I am not afraid to speak out, not only for myself, but for others. Especially when there are issues running, going through this community. I ran because I care about our small businesses, who definitely, right now, through this pandemic, need extra support. Our nonprofits, who are definitely seeing a hit. The addiction issues, and, and by far right now, the mental health issues that are rising, and the more resources that are needed. Also, our schools, who need extra support, not only from the city, but also from parents and community members, to keep not only our children safe, but the staff safe, and to retain and keep staff. And I also ran for the biggest reason, to make a difference. But I learned very quickly that many people in our community are not allowed to make mistakes, without them haunting them for some time. People all in this world deserve a second chance, and our mistakes are how we learn and how we become better people. I learned also quickly that people will do anything to win. Meaning, meaning having someone lose their job, meaning having everything they work for, for coaching, taken away from them, other volunteer opportunities, having death threats on her lawn, to having her vehicle vandalized, messages on social media, and to even, when stepping out of her house to check the mail, can't even wave to a neighbor without someone driving by and cursing her out. But guess what? I'm a survivor, and I'm a fighter. I will never lose my voice, and I will never lose my drive to quote-unquote "save the world," as what my friends and my family will tell you. I'm, for those of you that do not know, my appearance will change every day for the rest of my life, as I am battling a terminal cancer, and I stand before you today without a wig, without a hat, to show you all that I am proud of who I am, and I will never let anyone take that away from me or my voice. If you ask my doctors, I am not supposed to be here standing in front of you. I am supposed to be dead. But guess what? I'm not. So for that sake, I plan on taking this time to rebuild myself, to become an even better person, to go farther in life, and to become even stronger than I was before. I would like to, I would like to thank everybody who has been supporting me throughout this whole entire process, and who has never not known that I could not do it. Thank you for, very much for letting me speak out today, and hearing what I had to say. I will, I wish everybody to stay safe, be well, and like my voicemail says, always remember to smile, because for all you know, you could smile at one person, and your smile could change their day. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Now I'd like to call upon District Three candidate Teresa Collins to read her statement.
Just let me know when you can hear me.
We can hear you, Teresa.
Okay. I'm Teresa Collins, and I was running for District Three on city council. This has turned into something that I no longer can be a part of. The bias in our community runs deeper than I originally imagined. The bullying that I have experienced over the last couple of months of this campaign, I can assure you, is much worse than what you may have seen even publicly. It has gone far beyond something that I'm willing to subject myself or my family to. My concern is that this campaign has only been a window into what my treatment on council would likely be for the next two years if I was elected. Several members of the current council have sent a strong message, which has inspired some pretty aggressive behavior from their followers. Strong and opinionated women are not welcome here. I would be one vote against nine, and that's unproductive. I'm going to continue to fight the good fight, but I truly would not wish what I have been subjected to on anyone. It is the anticipation of possibly being elected and having to serve two years under this type of treatment that has me caused, that has caused me to arrive at the decision to stop my campaign and take myself out of the race. I cannot tell you how difficult this decision has been for me, and how difficult even more that it was to explain my, to my 14-year-old daughter. But I can assure my supporters that I will continue to make waves and influence change as much as possible in a different way, where I will have a greater impact. Women, raise up other women. We cannot tolerate this type of behavior in city leadership. While I realize political office is not for the faint of heart, this goes so far beyond that. We need to support each other, and make a difference, and transform this council into a more welcoming environment. In next year's election, let's get five strong women on council, and every election after that. Let's get behind them and support them. Once again, I thank my supporters and everyone who stood behind me, and I apologize for disappointing anyone, and I'm happy to talk with anyone if you reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Next, we'll hear from the candidates participating, participating in the forum tonight with their two-minute opening statements, beginning with District Candidate, District Three, Mike Cummings. Remember to watch for June, who will hold up the yellow card when you have 15 seconds remaining, and the red card when your time is up.
All right. First of all, thank you, committee members, for allowing me to be here tonight and providing a platform. Also, thank you for all who are tuning in to watch, whether it be live right now...
Mike?
First of all, thank you, committee members, for allowing me to be here tonight and providing a platform. Also, thank you for those who are tuning in to watch, whether it be live right now or via recording. I truly do appreciate all of you. My name is Michael Cummings, and I want to be the next Manitowoc District Three Alderperson. Academically, I have an associate's degree in criminal justice from Lake Shore Technical College, and a bachelor's degree from Concordia University in business management, graduating magna cum laude. Professionally, I've worked at Point Beach Nuclear Power Plant and Security for the last 17 years, and currently in a security management position. I've also owned Michael Cummings Marketing for the past 10 years, which helps businesses domestically and internationally with their online presence and web design. In my personal life, I'm a husband to an amazing wife, father to five beautiful children, and have lived in my residence for the past 14 years, in which is going to be my forever home. Before I share where I am now, it is important to know where I came from. I was born in Reedsville and raised on a dairy farm, which taught me the value of hard work. My father was the president of the school board for most of my childhood. From a young age, I had a front-row seat of understanding the impact the decision community leaders have on the daily lives of the community members. My father was a good man, so I saw firsthand how treating all people with dignity and respect enables trust with both constituents and key decision-makers for tough decisions. The reason why I'm a candidate for the city council is because I have a lot of pride in our city, and want to do whatever I can to continue its momentum forward in a positive direction, ensuring the city I live in continues to be the best it can be to raise my family. If you elect me, then you'll get someone who is action-oriented and believes in hard work. You'll get someone who believes in due diligence prior to making impactful decisions. You'll get someone who will be transparent in their decisions and tell you the why a vote was cast. You'll get someone who will be, not be intimidated by special interests. You'll get someone with the core values of honesty, integrity, and respect, which have guided me since my father talked to me during childhood. If you elect me, you'll get a strong leader you can be proud of representing you and the city we all live in. That's it.
Thank you, Mike. Next is District Seven candidate Tom Bolt.
Good evening. I am Tim Bolt, candidate running for District Seven Alderperson. I was born and raised in Manitowoc, on these very streets that I wish to serve. In 1985, I graduated from Manitowoc Lincoln High School, and I'm a 2010 graduate from Lake Shore Technical College. In 1986, I joined the United States Air Force as a security forces member. For those of you who don't know, that's a police officer. I served 20 years, with more than 16 of those years as a non-commissioned officer. I did four stateside tours, one in Upper Peninsula, one in North Dakota, South Dakota, and Wyoming. I did three tours in Europe, Holland, Germany, and Iceland, two in the Middle East, which were in the Persian Gulf, and one in Central America, Panama. In 2006, after all these travels, I moved back to District Seven with my wife Donna, daughter Dorothy, and son Josh. Serving this, served this community through mentoring, through the youth of coaching. I've coached NYA baseball for about five years. I spent seven years as a head football coach through the Manitowoc Chiefs. I've also been part of the Jefferson PTA. I've volunteered numerous hours for the Salvation Army. With exception of this 2020 pandemic, many of you might have seen me ringing bells for the Red Kettle campaigns. For the last 10 years, I've been employed through the Manitowoc Tool Machine. But after serving our country for 20 years, I feel that is now is the time to serve my hometown. If I'm elected, I will push to first and foremost, improve our city streets. I wish to provide a safe community for every one of us to raise a family, preserve our hometown values, and maintain law and order.
Thank you, Tim. And finally, the elder manic candidates. We have District Seven candidate Scott Pealot.
Hi, I'm Scott Pealot. I live on 2302 South 22nd Street. I am married to a teacher. I have a daughter who works nonprofit, and is also a city council member as well. My son is a high school teacher. I have been a teacher for a number of years, and in the last 20 years now, I've worked with international companies, BIC, and now I service convenience stores in northeast Wisconsin, up in the U.P. I also run a private wrestling club called X-Factory Elite out of DePierre. We started here in Manitowoc in 2005. With that, I have also got a degree from Silverlake College in Broadfield Social Science, and while I was a teacher, I taught history and government as well. When talking about hard work, I grew up on a farm in central Wisconsin, and my father instilled the aspect of hard work in my life every day, getting up before school, getting home after wrestling practice, and going out and doing chores. Even today, there are many days I work from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And I think that you need to do that sometimes, do the things you need to do. One of the reasons why I'm running for District Seven Alderman is I obviously have a background in government, and I want, it was about time that I needed to at least try to run for a council position. I have enjoyed seeing the progress in the downtown area here in Manitowoc, and I think that's one thing that I would definitely push, is to see the development and the lakes and the lake and the river being utilized as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now begin with the question-and-answer segment of the forum for the council. Each of you will have 30 seconds to respond. You will see June hold up the yellow card when you have 15 seconds left, and the red card when your time is up. Let's begin with the first question. What sets you apart from your opponent or others who have held this position in the past? Since Mike Cummings went first for our opening statements, Tim Bolt will answer this question first, followed by each candidate in order.
What sets me apart from my candidate over Scott is the fact that I have been 20 years with many different leadership styles, working with numerous different backgrounds and characters. I have also been through the world as far as learning different cultures, and that would give me the opportunity to provide that to our city council.
One reason I believe I'm a better candidate in this, this race, my diverse background as a coach, as a business owner, and an educator, has me prepared for the skill set needed and the leadership experience to be District Seven's Alderman. I've worked collaborating successfully with individuals and families of all ages, from all around the country and the world. And I also believe that's something that would translate as an alderman, that would work, go to the council, the mayor, and the city staff, and its constituents. Thank you.
Next candidate, please.
I felt that both myself and my opponent had the best intentions for the city, and we have similar recognition for the issues the city faces. I think the difference between us, though, is how we go about making decision, or making change happen. I have strong core values of honesty, integrity, and respect, and I apply those to people that agree with me and also disagree with me. In that, it fosters personal relationships, so it makes people want to work with you, not work with you in spite of you. I believe that not every battle should be a war, or should be your last stand, and ultimately, if, let's say, you don't get something that goes your way, that, that's okay, and then you can come back for something else. But as long as you maintain the dignity and respect throughout the entire process, then that makes, makes you a better leader.
Thank you. Next question. After reviewing the city's master plan, what part do you believe will have the largest impact on the community, and how, how would you support it? Scott, you'll take the next question?
Thank you. As I mentioned before, I think the city, or the downtown development is one of the bigger things, the Riverpoint District as well. And I think that with the development, you know, that'll go in hand-in-hand with some of the other aspects, some housing, restaurants, bars, and any other type of establishments that might work well down on the river or on the lake. Thank you.
Next candidate. Next candidate.
We have, sorry, the master plan that we have details, the three areas, it details Lake Michigan to the east, a navigational industrial and industrial river through the city center, and a historic perspective to downtown area. It provides a lot of examples that we can implement along the way, and we have done a great job. I think continuing to implement that and bring it all together, especially like, like we alluded to with the River Point District, that can go and transform the city to the next age to where we want it to be. We're just at the beginning stages of it, and if we continue with that, Manitowoc will transform itself through that plan.
Yes, I think the master plan is going well. However, in order to have that master plan, we also have to look at our infrastructure. And I think that we should also look at being the catalyst for going out through the community, that we must also improve our roads, our streets, whether it be downtown, to get us out and about our need of work terribly. And that's where I would think we would want to focus our point, so that we could be the nucleus and the catalyst for the entire area.
Thank you. Next question. Share a specific experience that demonstrates your leadership ability. Mike, this question is yours to start.
Yeah, I'll just use a specific one that we just recently had. I attended the Public Safety Committee meeting that we had a couple weeks ago. I brought up a recommendation to go and address the parking situation because I saw that it was on the agenda. On a side note, I started subscribing to all the agendas because of potentially being on the city council. I wanted to get involved, so if I did get elected, I could get going sooner versus later. So I immersed myself with that. So I provided an idea, a suggestion. Ultimately, it didn't get, get accepted, so, which isn't a big deal. I still ended up reaching out personally to the individuals on the council or on the committee and, you know, told them that it was okay, showed up for the city council meeting, thanked everybody for the job they did. There again, knowing that, that if I get elected, or even if I don't, I'd work with whoever did get elected, and we can go and still maybe instill some of the ideas that I have to correct the issue.
Next candidate, please.
Could you please repeat the question? I was jotting something down.
Share a specific experience that demonstrates your leadership ability.
Specific experience? I would have to say something like the flood in 1996 when I was in North Dakota, had to coordinate between multiple assets to get people evacuated in the middle of a city, and that would be to save lives and to help coordinate through different organizations to come up with a master plan.
Thank you. Next, Scott.
That's kind of, that's a good one. I think with the COVID aspect this year and with me running a wrestling program, in the past years, there's always been things that are run through the high schools, colleges, for tournaments and kind of, that kind of stuff. This year, me and a couple other private club coaches decided to run our own league and run our own tournaments to allow the, the athletes to get the opportunity to compete this, this year. And, and with that, it actually helped my business immensely. Thank you.
Okay, next question. What, if anything, would you personally do to help promote diversity on council and in city leadership positions? Tim, you'll have the opportunity to answer first.
First thing I would do is to go amongst my constituents and get ideas. My district has a wide vast of diversity, and I would get their opinion of what they might need before I would, and then gather their information and try to put together a plan that would assist each and every ethnic background.
Next candidate.
I, I agree with that. It's, one thing is actually, is to get some input from the community on what is needed and what could help them address some of these issues and see where we can go down the road and, and correct any issues that we have. Thanks.
And Mike?
Yeah, I believe diversity is a good thing in all aspects of life. The more ideas that you can have, the more you can accomplish. So with that, I also believe that it should be a product of happenstance and not necessarily forced. So what our role could be in the, as city government, is to create the playing field to make sure that everything is a hundred percent equal, and we uphold to that standard for everybody. And then another thing that we can do in the council is we can maybe promote having a diversity committee, where we have representation from all areas of the city, and they can go and present that to the city council if there are any issues that we would need to take up and address or any, any other problems.
Thank you. Next question. What's more important for our city, building new homes, including low income housing and new storefronts, or using existing buildings? Scott, begin with you.
Well, that's kind of a good question. It depends on the, the building itself. I know that where I had my wrestling facility here in Manitowoc, which is the Clark Ridge Hall, they were gonna build it, or it was gonna be sold and, and gonna be made into low income housing, and that's one reason why I had moved my facility. But I think with the example of the Schrader Shoulder Building here downtown, you know, that was a, a good building, and they were able to renovate it within. And obviously, there's some buildings that may not have that ability to be renovated and be a productive building. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next candidate.
Yeah, I would say there's a, a spot and place for renovation and a spot and place for newness, and also same with the different levels of housing. I think ultimately, it always, it comes down to what area of the city as far as what kind of development you want there, and then, of course, the dollar amount for it. You know, it might be cheaper to go and, and just create a new building versus repurpose a building depending on the issues at hand. So in reality, at the end of the day, if the city has to put input into it or money into it, it has to be understood fully as far as what the project has to be, and then we have to be fiscally responsible in making that decision for the action plan on whatever, whatever direction you decide to go.
Yes, I'd have to agree with you that the location is and the quality of the building that you wish to renovate is the utmost. You can't put a lot of money into it because sometimes you may have to rebuild. So therefore, you would have to take a look at what area of this community you want to rebuild up before you go ahead and try to just build new housing. But if you can get a use out of an older facility and still get the bang for your buck, so to speak, that's the way we should go too. Thank you.
Thank you. And next question. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in the city? Mike, we'll start back with you.
Yeah, first off, we have, we have a great website for the city. It's, it's very data-based. I'd like to work with the person that is involved with that website and get it to where it's a little bit more navigational for the user. Also, we have our city app, which is a great thing. I'd like to have that in more hands of the residents, and I have ideas to go and get that promoted out to our citizens, and we can use that as well for communication. On a personal level, for the people in my district, I am a web guy, so I would have my personal website currently still set up and available and make sure that I get that out to as many people in my district as possible as well. And then finally, one of the ideas I toss around is maybe having monthly or quarterly Alderman, meet Alderman get togethers. That'd be it.
Tim?
Yes, the, the website is fantastic, and it's, obviously, it's here. Everybody, or almost everybody has a chance of getting that. Having a net website that's easy navigational for even the novice of anybody who could, has struggling with it, but to go out and to get with our people and have access for each individual Alderman to take it back. So that's, myself in the case would be to have a website, have the accessibility of my constituents, and bring it back to the other members of the city council, so we together can service the whole community. Thank you.
I'm very up to social media with, with my wrestling club, so I have, I'm very accustomed to using Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and that's how I do a lot of contacting with my parents and other wrestling clubs and families. Text messages is, is huge, especially in, in Messenger and Facebook. I get a lot of messages from my customers as well, and obviously, my clients of wrestling too. So I just would just have all my, any constituent contact me in any of those forums at any time, and I'll, I'll answer, and I, I do. Doesn't matter if it's a Sunday afternoon or a Friday morning, I'll answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next question. What steps or action plan do you have that would help people with disabilities in their daily lives, which would include work, home, school, and community service? Tim, we'll begin with you.
Right now, I would say the best action plan would to have any type of home, I'll use like a habitat for humanity, if they can reach out to us and get us the information that they need and what needs they have, we could get outside organizations to possibly help us to adapt for their personal needs.
With, with that, uh, diverse disabilities, obviously, the, you know, the Disability Acts and things that the federal government has, has put in place is one thing, and I, and I do think that a lot of the nonprofit groups within a community can help out with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike?
Yeah, helping people with disabilities and special needs is, is something that is important to me. I'm gonna throw a couple shout outs here, but I've been a sponsor of the Miracle League of the Lake Shore since its inception. I know, I'm friends with their founder, Laura Zimer, and also my mom, Colleen Cummings, also works with special needs kids at Reedsville Public School District. So like I said, it is near and dear to me. Through my business, I also even provide software that provides ADA accessibility for even online users. So with that being said, if I'm involved with any decision that involves anything as far as infrastructure is concerned, I'm gonna make sure that we have equal rights and equal opportunity for everybody to enjoy it regardless of disability or special needs because we are all created as, as one under God.
Okay, thank you. Next question. What is your perspective on two-way traffic for 8th and 10th Streets? Scott, we'll begin with you.
I know in our radio debate, that was a, a topic, and I know at, at that time, I kind of was like, well, what is really the, the need? And I, you know, most of the years that I've lived here since 1991, it's been a one-way street. I know there was a timeframe when a bridge was being worked on, but I know the other day, I went, I came downtown to get a wrap for lunch with my, and to take home for my wife, and I had thought, boy, it'd be nice if I could just turn around and head that way. So it's one of those things, if it's a financial benefit to businesses downtown, then I guess it would probably be a good idea. Thank you.
Next, Michael.
Yeah, I am a, I, I am in favor of making those two streets two ways. If you take a look at the city master plan and also the parking study, both of them recommend that that be one of the first things that we do is make those two-way streets. Also then, when you take a look at the River Point District and wrapping that all in, I'm not sure how it would work if we didn't make it two-way streets. Also, I've done research on that from other cities that have converted one-ways to two-ways, and it also does provide economic, economic enhancement to the businesses when you're down there or when there is a two-way versus a one-way.
And Tim?
Yes, I would be in a, I would be a proponent for making it or changing it into a two-way since it's a one-way now because of the fact that as people come and they witness our beautiful downtown area, many of them are coming from outside. Their first venue to Manitowoc comes from the car ferry. They're naive to our systems, and the normal way for people to get about is through a two-way street system. I mean, I could see some possible mishaps if we don't start going that, and with our master plan, it would fit right in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next question. Do you believe the common council members should be limited to the amount of terms they serve? Why or why not? Mike, you're up next.
As initially, I would have told you that yes, that we should have some sort of term limit, but then I, I, I kind of anticipated this question, so I started talking about it to other people, and, and somebody made a point to me, they said, well, in real, in reality, every time any politician has an election, the power is already with the people to go and give them a term limit. If you did a bad job or you're not meeting the needs of your constituents, then they have the power to vote you out. So in reality, so I guess to answer the question directly, I believe that, that if we would establish a term limit, it should be something as far as, you know, twenty years or something of that nature. Case in point, look at the mayoral race. You know, Justin's been on the, on the same spot for a while. He's doing a great job. If, if the city believes that he should be removed, then they can do that at the election.
And Tim?
Yes, when you're talking to the local candidacy here through Alderpersons, I do not see a need for a term limit because of the fact that, A, getting people out there to represent the people if they are doing a bad job, the people of the Manitowoc need to come out and just have us removed. But if we are doing a good job and serving our constituents well, why would you want to remove that person?
And Scott?
Uh, yeah, that's a good question. In D.C., I would believe, yes, there needs to be some term limits, you know, there, it's a job for them, but I think for a city council member, they're running for a council member because they love the city. And if, if an individual's doing a good job for ten years, thirty years, well then, and, and the city's in a good shape, then I think it's, doesn't really matter. There should be no limits. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now we'll begin with the two men opening statements from the mayoral candidates. Chris Abel, yours to start us off.
And I want to thank the Citizens Advisory Committee for holding this forum, and certainly everybody who is watching, whether you're watching live or on replay at some point in the, in the future through the magic of the internet. This evening, you will certainly hear two clearly different approaches to the role of mayor here, and I think that that's a great thing because it means that you have a real choice. Some of you already know me, some that have followed council for a long time know me, some of you that are well informed about what goes on in the MPSD know me, so I thought I'd give a brief overview of myself. To get more information about me or some of the things we talk about tonight, I would encourage everybody to visit www.aable.vote or email me at able.vote@gmail.com or just call me at 652-0036. I was born at Chicago Presbyterian Hospital, raised in the Chicago suburbs. I worked for Sony Corporation for a while when I finished at University of Illinois. I then got a job with a company called Heaven Street Communications, which was sort of an internet directory assistance startup for the, at that time burgeoning cellular market in the Chicago suburbs. In my jobs at Sony and at Heaven Street, I spent a lot of time doing training, so I decided to go back to school and become a teacher. I spent the last twenty years teaching at Madison Elementary, which was great fun. I spent ten years on council right here, and so now I seek to serve the community as your mayor. I appreciate your interest, and I look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Nichols, you're next.
Thank you, and thank you also to the Citizen Advisory Committee for hosting this council and mayoral forum. It's nice to see candidates up here and, of course, Chris here today as well. A lot of you know me because I've been around for quite some time, which is a good thing, but it's always a good thing to reflect upon where I came from and, and really why I'm running for office. So a little bit about me quick. I was born and raised here in Manitowoc at Holy Family Hospital. My entire family, since my great-great-grandparents, lived in Manitowoc when they immigrated here back in the 1860s, before we even became an official city. My family's been here ever since. My direct family still lives here in Manitowoc. We attend Emmanuel Lutheran Church where my grandpa, my dad, and I all went to school as well. I graduated from Manitowoc Lutheran High School in 2005, and then attended UW Manitowoc for a few years, and eventually received my bachelor's degree in history from Silver Lake College here in Manitowoc. I was first elected to the city council in 2005, and I served there for four years, one year as the council president, and since 2009, I've served as mayor. I'm running for mayor again, and I'm asking for your vote quite simply because I love this city. I absolutely love where we are going. I love the decisions that we have made in the past to get us to where we are today. I love the day-to-day challenges of the job. I love working with council to get things done. I love working get things done, I love working with citizens of the community to do amazing things that we've seen over the past few years. We have a lot to be proud of, and I want to continue the work that we started as your mayor, if I'm fortunate enough to earn your vote. Uh, I'm looking forward to this forum, to the questions that will arise, and to the next little two and a half weeks here before April sixth, Election Day. Uh, and I also want to thank Chris, uh, I, uh, again, I, I've said this before, but I respect Chris personally and professionally, we worked together for many years, but as he said, today, uh, you'll hear, um, pretty stark differences in our approach to how we feel the office of mayor should be representing the citizens of the city of Manitowoc, and as he said, that's a healthy thing for our community. At the end of the day, you, the citizen, are the mayor's boss, and you should decide the direction of the city. Hopefully tonight, you see the differences in candidates to bring an educated vote, and hopefully I'm fortunate enough to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin the question and answer section with, with the mayoral candidates. You'll each have one minute to answer each question, the yellow card will signify sixteen, fifteen seconds left, and the red card will tell you when time is up. First question, what is your vision for the development of the Manitowoc River area and the lakefront area? Justin, you'll go first.
I'll probably say this several times, but if you're going, you're gonna give me a minute to answer that, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna have to have chats after this because there is a lot on, on the riverfront. Uh, twenty years ago, we, we turned our back away from the river and, and, and the lakefront, and we did it for a purpose because we saw immense growth on the west side of the city. But unfortunately, we lost sight of truly the most important part of the city, where the city was built, and that is on the river and lakefront. And it's not just, we think of the Manitowoc River downtown, we also talk about the Little Manitowoc River, um, and the excitement that we're starting to see there with some grants that we've received over in the El, Old Elks Club Development, uh, to add kayak and, and boat and, and fishing stations on that river, but also i- i- in downtown. And we're fortunate enough that we have a federal channel, so we see commerce and industry, and we can attract businesses, uh, with an option of, of going by water to do their business. Uh, but also over the last few years, we have seen so much increase in recreation on the river, kayaks, uh, boats, a- and, uh, water boars, uh, that, that people just, I don't know how they do it on the river, but, um, that's, that's their, their choice. But we've also seen, if you think of it, two years ago, we didn't even have a restaurant on the river, and now with the wine bar, people can enjoy it. We're truly coming back to the river and lakefront, a- and there's just more exciting things to come.
Chris?
Thank you. Um, I think that if you look at the downtown strategic plan, it talks extensively about what is envisioned for the river, there's a lot in there that will work out, I think, quite nicely. You also though want to be careful that you don't get the river so cluttered that no one can really get a chance to see it besides the people who have the property right along it. So you have to balance your development with access for everyone, and that's an important thing to keep a mind, keep mindful on. I also think we want to work aggressively with our state legislators to make sure that we are getting the correct kind of laws passed to keep the river clear, well upstream from us, from the pollutants that end up in it, which there's not going to help you at all to develop the river if you can't control the pollutants that are flowing downstream. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, what are your plans or ideas for the areas of blight in our city such as the mural and mall areas? Chris, you'll go first.
Thank you. The, a- any city our size, or larger, is going to have some blight, and so you have to make a determination of how much money you're planning to spend on blight, and how much you're going to use where you take over the property, develop it, or tear it down to make it available for development, and how much you want to recoup of those costs that you invested. The mural building, there are probably a lot of people who would be interested in using some of that property if they understood how safe or unsafe it is because of the pollutants below ground level. It is critical to get the testing done and get a clear understanding. It's a project that's gone on too long, and we need to work aggressively with. As far as the mid-city mall area, I know the developer has some ideas, I certainly would want the city to be working with him to make it possible to move forward on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. So a few years ago, we created a blight program for the city, which was supported by the, uh, council at the time, a- and still is today. We've seen many properties, um, just currently, we see MC3s, the old music bar on Chicago Street, which will be coming down in the very near future here as well, um, because one of our goals is to create safe neighborhoods, and when we have blighted properties of owners who don't do anything with those properties, uh, I believe it's our role to step in and really, at the end of the day, create higher property values for people in that neighborhood, for, uh, budding neighbors a- and, and in different residential areas throughout the city as well. So that has been a very successful plan. The mid-city mall site is privately owned, um, we did create a TIF district in that area quite a few years ago to prepare for the day when we need to have infrastructure improvements and other development on that site when the owner has something, uh, a, a project to bring forward. But I truly believe that the, um, growth from the Elks Club site, the Bay Shore Development, truly will spin off into the mid-city mall site, uh, because it'll be, just make that land much more valuable, just like we have a blight program to tear some things down to increase property values, the growth we've seen at Elks Club will continue that. Yeah, oh, there's my minute. I'm sure we'll get back to mural. I'll, I'll spend a minute on mural, a different question. Thanks.
Thank you. The demographics of Manitowoc are continually changing, including people of different races, ages, genders, and sexualities. How will you be representing, uh, representation for these demographics? Justin?
Yeah, so this is, this is an important question for our community, and, uh, the question of diversity and inclusion ha- has come front and center, um, this last year, but in Manitowoc in general. Uh, we saw thirty years ago when we had, thirty-plus years ago, when we had a large Hmong population, um, enter our community, uh, the leadership at that time reached out and, and ensured that there was a path for individuals to have much success in our community, there was the Hmong Community Center a- and the like. We're seeing different cultures and, and, uh, individuals moving into our community who weren't born and raised here like, like I was, or like many of us were. Uh, one thing I want to do, uh, is create a diversity committee, um, dedicated to addressing issues that we do have in our community. We can't be blind to the fact that just because we're not making national news here in Manitowoc, that there aren't issues that we need to address. Uh, there are many issues, and it's, it's issues like making sure that individuals who have a language barrier, um, are, uh, don't have issues trying to find a job. Um, there's a lot of small businesses in the community that just don't have the resources maybe to help individuals who have a language barrier. We as a city and leadership need to make sure that we help anyone that we can, uh, to make sure that they know that Manitowoc feels like home. Um, so there's, there's, there's a lot that we need to do, um, I'm not gonna dismiss that, and I'm dedicated to ensuring that diversity, uh, and inclusion is, is a priority if I'm elected. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. Well, obviously, I am part of the single largest growing demographic in the city based upon the statistical studies, and that is the group from fifty-five on, and that's a group that's going to need and want a lot of services, both personal services, health services, and also recreational abilities. And so that's certainly something, a group that we want to keep making sure that the things that we develop are easily accepts, accessible to all of them. And we want to make sure that we have places for all of us as we continue to age, because this really is a community that once you are here, most people, this is a great place to spend the rest of your life. It's certainly the way I felt about it when I came here in ninety-seven, and I think it's going to be that way for most folks, so we want to make sure we have those facilities. When it comes to diversity, obviously, as a classroom teacher, I've seen a lot of diversity, and we want to have a world that welcomes and helps everybody, but more important than just how a group looks is a diversity of thought. And what worries me on council is that lack of diversity, which is something I will work to develop.
Thank you. Next question, what are the top three issues that you would like addressed in Manitowoc? What are your plans for them? Chris, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, my, my top three issues absolutely would be, number one, I think the city needs a comprehensive road plan. We have a lot of roads that need a lot of servicing, and we don't have a comprehensive plan for getting to them all. A list is generated annually, and some of those roads are worked on, and some of those roads are pushed off, and sometimes they're pushed off because they're more expensive than roads that need less work but are less expensive to do. Second thing I would like to see is absolutely a comprehensive strategic plan for the entire city, for all parts of it, developed by the council and the mayor. When I was on council, I specifically asked for this and was told, because I only served two years, I couldn't be part of a five, ten, fifteen, or twenty-year plan. I have a completely different view of that, I believe the council and the mayor should be building one together, and then building budgets based upon that plan. And the last thing would be to finish up with Mural and finish up some of the other projects that have been started and not finished here in the city. Thank you.
My first issue is, as it always has been from, from my first day in office, and that is just continued fiscal responsibility. Anyone who knows me knows that, uh, the, the budget, balancing the budget, ensuring the strong fiscal health of the city is my top priority, because without that, there's really nothing else we can do. Uh, so you will continue to see the debt-reduced, balanced budgets presented to the council, uh, and, and, um, investments in, in different areas of the city for continued tax growth. Uh, I want to see continued investments throughout the city in downtown, in the River Point District, um, in the, the industrial park, in, um, in the Bay Shore Development, ensuring that continues, and in parks. We have thirty-six beautiful parks in our community, and sometimes when budgets are tight, parks are sometimes the first thing to get cut, but they provide such a quality of life for all of our citizens that they should be a priority every year. And then the third would be infrastructure improvements. Um, I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you that I have all these bright plans to fix all your roads. Uh, it's tough as an incumbent sometimes to run on this because, uh, it's easy to say, I want, I'm gonna fix your roads, um, but having an actual plan and action, an action item with that is, I think, what is important. Because of the strong fiscal health of the city, because of what we've done over the years, we're able to put more money into roads, we're able to put money, money into shoreline stabilization, which is becoming an issue along our lakefront and riverfront, uh, and parks and future industrial parkland. So it's not just, I have a, I wanna fix roads, I'm gonna actually show you that we can do it because of the strong fiscal health of the city.
Thank you. Next question, how do you plan to get your constituents involved in the decision-making process for important issues? Justin?
Yeah, so, um, transparency is, is really important to me, and, uh, I, I strongly believe that you as the citizen should have every right to see everything that the council does, a- and I do, um, every public document. When I started on council, we had two meetings a month, and, uh, we had a, a stack of papers for every item, and the citizens really didn't get to see that, uh, because there was nothing online, there was nothing, uh, available to them. We implemented a system where every single document now is online, and we've become more efficient. Uh, I'm not gonna sit up here and say we need more meetings, because we could have five meetings a month, but if we're not efficient with that, what are we really accomplishing? We're just saying we're gonna meet to talk about something, we're being transparent. I would rather be efficient in our transparency. Um, one thing I know that, uh, Chris has said over and over again is that you would make the mayor's, uh, agenda public. And, and that sounds great in reality, and if you ever want to see my, my, what I do every day, you're more than welcome to, uh, but in reality, it just happened yesterday, something required my attention that wasn't on my agenda that pushed everything else off. That happens every day. The mayor's job is not seven-thirty to four-thirty, and I believe that's a difference that, that Chris and I have of the role of mayor. It's not, it's not a set like, uh, a, a regular city employee. Uh, it, it's not like a, a classroom where you have math class every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from nine to nine-fifty. The mayor's job is twenty-four-seven, and to me, transparency and open government is that, I hope there's a trust between you and I that I'm doing my job, and if I'm not, you should question me and, and call me out on it. Uh, but I don't believe that the role of mayor is, is nine to five, uh, and that everything is set. Um, it, it's, it's much more difficult than that. Thanks.
Yeah, first of all, I have never said that the job of mayor is a nine-to-five job. That's a convenient thing to put in there, but it's certainly not something I imply anywhere. What I have said, and what I continue to say, and what I do on my own website for my campaign, is that you will have a publicly visible schedule for the mayor. You will know what your mayor is scheduled to be doing all the time. I have said the mayor will have open office hours weekly, some in the morning, some in the afternoon, some at night, so that you have access to your mayor. I have said that I will return to a mayor's report at council meetings so that the council members are free to publicly ask the mayor questions to better inform everyone. This is exactly how I plan to better inform the constituents. I'd also like to see us do a no, better job developing our YouTube channel so that a lot of people can get a lot of questions answered there with some interesting videos. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question, what do you see as the duties of the mayor, and what would you do to fulfill them? Chris, you're first.
Thank you. I believe completely that the duty of the mayor is to act as the city administrator. Justin and I have talked about this any number of times over the last fourteen, seventeen, I can't remember how long it is, years now. I believe that it is the job of the council to decide where the city is going, and it is job of the mayor with city staff to get the city there. My analogy is, the council picks the picture from the coloring book and gives the mayor and the city staff the crayons, and the mayor and the city staff color it in, but the council sets the guidelines. Whenever you see or read about the council having a meeting where they talk about, maybe we need a city administrator, that's always an indication that the mayor isn't acting as the city administrator, and that's what the mayor should be doing. The mayor should be working with council rather than trying to steer the council. I'm not saying the mayor shouldn't inform the council, absolutely, the mayor is the chief educational officer of the city, letting the council know what their decisions mean, letting the public know what the council decisions mean, and letting the employees know how things are going to be enacted that the council has asked for. Thank you.
Justin?
So I, I view the role of mayor a little different. I would say instead of chief education, it's the chief executive officer, that's what state statutes, um, specifically calls for the mayor. Uh, one thing that I, I think Chris and I have biggest difference on is the understanding that the mayor is not, uh, an employee of the council. Yes, the mayor acts as the administrator of the city and the day-to-day operations of the city, which also is spelled out in state statute, but the mayor doesn't work necessarily for the council. The mayor works for the citizens. He, we wouldn't be here today if not for the fact we have an election, because the council would just meet and hire a city administrator. Uh, we don't have that position in the city of Manitowoc, yes, it comes up once in a while when an alderman doesn't like something I do or that, but, uh, it's never been enacted. Um, so the role of mayor is, is to act as the day-to-day administrator for the city of Manitowoc, and I believe that because the mayor is elected, uh, the mayor has just as much responsibility to set course for the city, to promote ideas, to come up with new ideas for the city, just as any council member has as well. At the end of the day, the mayor can't do anything on his or her own, the council has to work together to get at least five votes to do anything on their own. That's the way the government is set up, and that's the way I have always operated. Whenever I want something as the mayor that I think is best for the community, I have to work with the council, uh, because nothing can become a law without them. I respect that difference, but I believe in a strong mayor type of fo, government because we don't have a city administrator, that is the mayor, and the mayor reports to the citizens, not to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will open it up for questions that were submitted by members of the public, and we'll also be checking in with Sonya to include any questions viewers. and we'll also be checking in with Sonia to include any questions viewers are submitting on social media for the mayoral candidates.
First question on Zoom. Mr. Abel, why did you rewrite our city's mission statement without any public input or forewarning in 2016, removing the phrase "arts, humanities, and cultural diversity"? What was wrong with the old one that made you want to change it? And is it true that you haven't even read the old one before changing it? You hadn't even read the old one before changing it, as you stated in an email?
Okay. First of all, I want to say that that question is verbatim what was sent to me in an email, so I am surprised that the person who got that answer, which was fairly complete and elaborate, feels the need to ask it again. This question has actually come up over the last four years. I'm happy to answer it again, but I just want to reiterate, I have answered this question thoroughly. When the matter of a city mission, vision, and values came along, I checked with the mayor, and I asked the mayor what the purpose of the mission statement was, and he said it would be used to evaluate city employees. I then wrote a mission statement that I thought would be applicable to all city employees, whether it is somebody who works in the clerk's office, or somebody who works over at the RAR, or somebody who is filling potholes in the streets. I felt it was a short and accurate statement of what the most important thing the city does would be. I presented it to the council, and the council voted six or seven in favor of it, so that's just how that came to be.
Do I also get an opportunity to respond? Okay. I didn't know if it was specifically addressed to...
We'll go back and forth.
Okay. Yep. All right. Okay. Well, so this issue did come up quite a few years ago. We did have a committee of employees that sat down to talk about the mission, vision, values of the city of Manitowoc, which, yes, was geared towards city employees and their performance evaluations, because we wanted to start a system of setting goals for employees. We've never had that in the past, and we truly wanted to evaluate them on their core competencies and goals that they set. One thing that I was against when then Alderman Abel brought forward a change from what we originally had, I didn't see that change until that day, I believe, and I didn't even get a chance to comment on that change, but as with everything, a majority of the council rules, and that mission and vision was passed. I would like to bring that language back into our city's mission and vision, and that is on my website. That's one of my plans for talking about diversity and inclusion community-wide, because I think if it's not the city's mission to have that language, and it's not spelt out, how do we move forward? So, thank you.
Sonia, do we have a question?
We do. Just one moment, please.
will be open to the online audience. Viewers on Zoom can submit questions via the chat box. Viewers on Facebook can submit questions in the comments section. When submitting the questions, please indicate whether it's for the council members or the mayoral candidates. Can be for either or.
All right. So the first question we have is for council and the mayor, and this is, "In thinking about hate crimes in recent news, and understanding that everyone deserves to live without fear of violence against them because of who they are, how do you plan to support a community environment that is equitable and inclusive where people can live without fear?"
I guess I'll start with this one. First off, safety in the community and where you live is obviously vitally important. We should all have the right to go and live anywhere in this country and feel safe going out and about your daily business without fear of anything in reality. So with that, as far as us in the government leadership is concerned, we can set the conditions. As far as the council people, you know, we're the ones that represent our district, so what we can do is understand what's going on in our area, understand the issues that are going on in our area, and then promote everybody getting along instead of creating a hostile-type environment. If we address things right away from the get-go, as far as any issues that are going on in our area, we can go and prevent anything larger happening. And that means asking the tough questions. That means taking action on things, and that means, you know, doing what's necessary to go and make sure that this city remains safe and a good place to live at all times.
There is no room for hate crimes anywhere in the world, especially in our hometown. The proper thing to do is to get out to find out what each area does need. We need to then focus and make sure that these communities are heard, meaning each ethnic background, find out what they need to help them with their different backgrounds, because we don't know exactly what they are feeling. We don't know if it is offensive to them or not. So we have to get out and be with our people and find out what is bothering them, because the hate crimes one person may see or not understand that there's even a problem. And you have to get out there and get with the community.
Thank you, Scott.
One thing, living in Manitowoc, I think you would hope that that kind of stuff wouldn't happen, but, you know, unfortunately, it is out there, and it doesn't matter what size of town you live in, it's going to happen. I mean, like I mentioned before, I've worked with individuals from many countries, many areas of this country, and when I taught years ago, I actually taught in the Menominee Indian Reservation, and I kind of saw some of that kind of stuff. And, you know, that was one job that I had that definitely opened my eyes to racism and hate crimes, so. I think we have to, as a community, be cognizant of it and do whatever we can to make sure it doesn't happen.
Thank you. These hate crimes are just frankly despicable things. They are acts perpetrated by people because they dislike someone else because of their color, or their gender, or their religion, or their belief, or their orientation, and it is simply unacceptable anywhere at any time. My feeling on it is, it should be a zero-tolerance thing when they occur. The way you prevent them is being more welcoming and opening to everybody, to make sure that we're holding the kind of public events that do welcome a plurality of people. Thank you.
Thank you. This is very, very timely, as was mentioned in the question. I've been very, I've been happy to see that there's been several groups that have stepped up over the last few years that are bringing issues center stage, and really, for me, that's what's most important as a leader. I, you know, again, I was born and raised here. When we talk about equitable and inclusive without fear, it's my job as a leader to understand what that fear is, and what we can do to work together to address it. I've learned a lot over these last few months and year from several different groups and several different people about the true issues that are in our community. Again, we're not susceptible, just because we're Manitowoc, to issues that we see worldwide, and we need leaders to first and foremost understand and appreciate what an individual is going through, because, again, Manitowoc cannot be home to all if we don't work for all. And one thing that a former mayor of Appleton, Tim Hanna, taught me, which is one of the most, the best pieces of advice I've ever learned, is, "If you want to know what your community is going to look like in 20 years, take a look at your grade schools." And we are becoming much more diverse as a community, and if we aren't making decisions today that are in the best interest of all people, those kids won't stay in Manitowoc. They won't want to call Manitowoc their home. We want to start, what Appleton did was a mutual respect campaign, because it first and foremost comes down to respect for all human beings, no matter their lot in life. I'm encouraged by the younger generation. What I've seen when I go to schools and talk to kids, they don't see someone's color or their skin, or their sexual orientation. I think it's important for us, older folks, to maybe take a bit of advice from them, and maybe that's where we need to start to move forward to ensure that hate crimes or violence never occur in Manitowoc. Thanks.
Do we have another question, then, Sonia?
We do. So this is for the council candidates. With so many large companies coming to Manitowoc offering more jobs than we have people to fill, what would you propose, as a member of our city government, we do to attract more people to Manitowoc to fill these jobs?
This time, I'll start with Tim.
One of the things I would do to attract more jobs is get out on the internet, get on the webpages, show them the beauty of our community. We have a master plan, which is making the streets in the local area attractive to anybody who wants to show up and try to make Manitowoc their home. We also have a good, outstanding school system. Show these highlighted areas where they can call this place and be proud to call it home, and that they can grow in each of their own needs. Thank you.
Scott?
One thing I know that downtown development is a key as well. You know, the Riverpoint District with the apartment buildings being built, and I've seen some other ones being built. That's the number one. Housing is important for someone to come here, but I think with, you know, some of that development is going to make this city a town where people want to come to live, because it's beautiful and it's safe. And that's one of those things that is important when you think about where you want to live and bring a family to. And I think we're in the right direction, but, you know, continued development is key. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah. Being a marketing guy, it comes down to just simple recruitment of people, no different than, you know, driving traffic to a website, per se, and getting people to buy something off of a website. Same thing here. We have a lot of great things that are going on in this city that we can sell to people. You know, our cost of living is low. We have beautiful natural resources, the parks, you know, on that part, our downtown development. You know, in reality, when you have companies that need to bring people in, the people want to ultimately go to a town that's nice, that has amenities, that's safe, like I said, lower cost of living. They want to, according to our downtown plan, live, work, and play in that city as well, and have it all there. So I think a major campaigning effort as far as, you know, marketing, all the good stuff that we have in this city can help attract people to it.
All right. The next question is for candidate Bolts. Where do you propose to collect the funding to repair our roads?
I've given some thought to this, and I believe Mayor Nichols at one time proposed this as well. I'm thinking of looking at or getting a committee together to propose a half a percent, yes, a half a percent, to our city's sales tax, so that way, no one person or community, whether it be north side, south side, is taxed with the burden of trying to repair our roads, that each and every person that would come into Manitowoc, whether they buy a pack of gum, groceries, get gas, would all help us to improve our city streets. Thank you.
Scott?
With the city streets, I know that not too long ago, I saw a study that, in the news, that Wisconsin's roads are like a grade as like a D or something. And I do understand, my father is a town board member where he lives, and when I was home during deer hunting, he was talking about how much a road costs, and I think, you know, for us in the city, we have to be fiscally responsible and choose the roads that need to be fixed first, that are high-traffic, and have a plan of which roads in which area go in order. But again, I think we need to be fiscally responsible with roads.
And Mike?
Yeah. My only input with it is, I'm a person that believes in not having to recreate the wheel if you don't have to. So when it comes down to funding, obviously, what we can do is always controlled by the almighty dollar. I think the last resource that we should do is raise taxes, because ultimately, once you raise taxes, what's the next thing you're going to raise taxes for? It's an easy pot to go to, but it should be the pot that we go to last, kind of like an emergency fund, per se. So with the not having to recreate the wheel option, if we had to find funding to go and do projects, I would suggest, let's look at other cities. Let's look at all the options that are out there for funding for it. What programs do they have? And then sit down and do the due diligence to go and pick and choose the best from each one of those cities that they're already doing, and maybe have our own plan that way, or if there is a gold standard out there, we try to mimic that part of it. But like I said, the taxes should be the last, because how often are you going to keep on reaching back to that? That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have more questions? Okay.
All right. The next question is for all the alderman candidates. Do you think we should continue the mask mandate until instructed otherwise by the CDC?
Okay. We'll start with Scott.
With the mask mandate, I know that my daughter was one of the person in city council who proposed it here, and I can guarantee that if I had been on city council at the same time, I'd be voting no. Obviously, with wrestling, we don't compete with masks on, and I've noticed in the last few weeks, wrestling tournaments, when we're mandated by USA Wrestling to wear masks, it's gotten very lax, and I think with the future, or, you know, with the vaccinations coming, you know, the large portion of people with vaccinations, I think it's about time to lift the mandate. Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah. It's in general, right? We live in the land of the free of the United States, so ultimately, in my general belief, people should have less restrictions, or less restrictions instead of more when it pertains to government. In reality, though, going to the COVID-19 with the mask, even though I don't enjoy wearing it, I still am an analytical person, so I believe science, factual data, and ultimately common sense should dictate what we have in that decision. If we have an overriding directive from either the state or federal government, then we have to follow that piece of it. If it is just solely just a recommendation up to each one of each city as far as what to do, or each local governing body what to do, then, like I said, let's take a look at our numbers locally, let's look at the science, the factual data, and then go from there. So if it's safe to do so, we should do that and get everything back to normal as soon as possible.
Tim?
Yeah. It looks like, again, just like this question came up at our debates as alderpersons, I'm in the middle, because I do believe that we are a land of the free, home of the brave. I do believe, though, a freedom of choice, and with this COVID-19 vaccinations hitting the country and our city, there'll be more diverse distributions, but each person should have a choice. If the city council or the mayor decides that in the government buildings that we need to have our masks on, well, so be it. But however, each and individual business establishments, what do not wish us to wear them, or have an open policy that they don't want to have it, well, then they don't have to have it, because it's their choice. If I want to go to that residence or to that establishment, and they require me to have a mask, I will respect that, and I will put that mask on. However, if they don't, then it's freedom of choice to not have it as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, the next question is, um, they didn't state who it was for, so I guess for everyone. Um, "What needs to be done to have Plastics Number Five accepted in the county's recycling program? And how would you choose to enhance the recycling efforts here?"
Let's start with Mike.
Yeah, I guess it's me, uh, Plastics Number Five. Um, I'm a little naive onto exactly what areas that, uh, covers or what type of plastics that is to be put in the recycles. So, uh, I guess the, I'd have to do my own research, but it, as far as putting in distribution, if this is something that's new, then might, we might need to get a separate container, containing area to hold that particular number in and then have it picked up as a separate entity. Sorry, I, I, I'm naive to that one. Thank you.
Yeah, like, Tim, I'm, I'm not really sure what Number Five is. Um, I do know that, you know, in my home, every bottle and plastic and cardboard and everything that goes in a recycling bin and, and at my wrestling facility, I've tried to, uh, have bottles and, you know, in one container. But unfortunately, parents don't always read and they throw garbage in there too. Um, but I guess my point is, if we should be recycling and it's part of, uh, what we need to do here in, in today's world.
Michael?
Yeah, overall, I believe that Manitowoc should be a clean city, as far as clean as possible. I, uh, on a personal life, like to travel the world, so I've been to eight different countries. I go to, been to a ton of different cities. There's a lot of dirty cities that are out there. So when it comes to recycling, even though I am as well unfamiliar with the Plastics Number Five part, that's not my expertise, uh, if it is a problem, I believe then more recycling, uh, that we can have, the better. Uh, just because, like I said, if it's not getting recycled, if it's not getting disposed appropriately, then it's gonna be on our streets somehow. So, uh, if it is something that is an issue, I would do my due diligence ahead of it, ahead of time on that part of it, make sure that we can do it fiscally as a city and then do whatever I can to get that implemented and obviously the greater recycling program, uh, as a whole, uh, if that is a prob- if that is an issue. 'Cause we don't want our city to have garbage out, out and about.
Go to Justin?
I'll go, yeah, sure. So, always fun to get a curveball question. Uh, so the, the Manitowoc County Recycling Center obviously is not, not run by the city of Manitowoc, so, uh, we don't, you know, we don't have any control over, uh, that entity per se. So I would encourage whoever asks this question to contact their county board supervisor or county executive, um, to get more specifics. Uh, but how I'll answer this question is, I, I think, you know, the city can be a leader in promoting, uh, clean environment, uh, in all aspects. I mean, we live on Lake Michigan, which is the, the world's largest freshwater system, uh, at the Great Lakes. I mean, we're so fortunate. Uh, I think one of our top priorities as a city is to make sure that it remains clean for future generations, because, um, I, I've said it before, uh, that water is gonna be like gold was to the Romans. Um, it, it's just so valuable and we're gonna see growth in our community because of it. Um, but being a leader in just terms of promoting, um, uh, the wellbeing of our natural en- environment, uh, I know, for example, uh, we have a mayor's youth action com- youth action council, which is a group of great kids, uh, high school students, uh, who are dedicated to addressing issues in the community. And one thing they did this last, uh, this past winter was raise money to put recycling bins in our parks. You know, it's, sometimes it takes, uh, someone from the outside to come in and say, "How come we don't have recycling bins in our parks? What can we do about it?" Uh, so, I, I mean, I wholeheartedly support that and endorse that. As mayor, if they raise some money, I'd, I'd propose money from the council to, to finish up, to get all of our parks recycling bins. Um, so, um, that's, that's all I got.
Next, Chris?
Yes, thank you. Obviously, the more things that we can recycle, the better. So certainly, that's something that we want to do if we can. As has been correctly pointed out here, this really is something that's overseen by the county, not by the city. So the city's ability to do something about this is limited. It's not nothing, but it is limited. Uh, certainly, what's needed is to do a little research, to find out where the nearest places that will recycle Plastics Five, um, how we can get it to them the most economically and make sure that those costs are controlled. And then meet with the county officials that oversee the recycle program and say, "Here is something that our city would really like to see happen, and how can we get this to move forward?" Um, you know, in that way, what you're trying to do is encourage the change. Uh, like everybody else up here, I'm no expert on Plastics Number Five. So certainly, when I'm mayor, come on down and show me, because I'm sure the person that asked this question has already done all that research. And so they'll give us a lot of answers, so we can hit the ground running on this. Thank you.
Have another question then?
Yep, so, this is for the mayoral candidates. "Our small city does not have the same drug, drug addiction issues that many bigger cities have yet. There is more activity every day. What will you do to slow this progress and hopefully receipt it?"
And we start with Chris.
Thank you. Our city does not have, as apparent, a drug problem as larger cities do. That is absolutely true. But it doesn't mean that we don't have a drug problem. And certainly, the things that we want to do is work very aggressively with the Metro Drug Unit to make sure that we're doing everything we can to limit the availability of the drugs. And we want to work with our many, uh, groups out there that are there to support people who have substance addiction problems. Because there are two parts to this to solve. The first part is the supply chain, which is what you count on the Metro Drug Unit to fix. And the other part is the addiction part. And that's where you really need to work with and help people. So it's only by addressing both of those that we can resolve this issue. Or actually minimize it. I don't, I would never pretend that it'll ever go away completely because they're always inventing new drugs that are either more powerful or more addictive and just victimize more people. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think, uh, um, what it would cut, what it boils down to for my answer is, it, it takes a village. Uh, this is, this is a worldwide problem and it's, it's more prevalent in the United States over the last few years, and even in small communities like Manitowoc. Uh, while, uh, like the question poses, it's not as prevalent, but, um, it's without a doubt here. And kind of piggybacking on what Chris said, there really are, there's two facets to it. There's, there's the law enforcement side. I want to make sure, and we've done a great job with our Metro Drug Unit and with our police department, even working with, with Two Rivers Police Department and the sheriff's office, to say that, eh, don't even try to sell drugs in Manitowoc, because we will catch you and, and don't even come to our community. Uh, because that's a lot of what we are seeing, is individuals from outside of Manitowoc coming in to sell drugs. Uh, and, and we wanted to make a statement that that is not appropriate or acceptable here. Uh, and the, the second side is, is there is, um, there are mental health, uh, issues that need to be addressed. Um, there are addiction issues that, that just absolutely need to be addressed. And that's where I say it takes a village. Uh, we have some tremendous resources in Manitowoc County that have, some have started over the past few years and, and others have been around for a while. But Core Treatment Services just opened up, uh, the Lighthouse Recovery Center, Painting Pathways, uh, Haven, Hope House, Manitowoc County Human Services. All these groups, along with the mayor's office, along with the police department and Metro Drug, uh, need to continue working together. The mayor's office and the city needs to be supportive of these groups. When things like whether, questions whether or not the drug court will continue because the state grant is ending, I believe that the mayor and the council need to be very steadfast and firm that things like that need to continue. Because it should be our responsibility as elected officials, as a city, to ensure that, again, back to the, what we started with, that everyone has an opportunity in Manitowoc. And some people just need help. And there's been a lot of groups that have formed that can help. And sometimes it just takes, just takes a nudge or a push. And maybe it's from the mayor, maybe it's from someone else, to, 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 to seek these different organizations out. Thanks.
Alright, any more questions?
So the next question is for all candidates. "What is the role of government in funding or developing private businesses?"
Okay, why don't we start with Scott?
I think we had the same question in our, uh, radio debate. Um, I think government...